Welcome to the Monday, March 17th, 2025, meeting of the Town Board. We have all of our planning board members here, so we can get it through. And I know what the changes to the agenda. All right, so we've confirmed that it will be posted. Did you see Jim's meeting notes? Any questions for Jim? There are none, may I have a motion to accept the meeting notes?
I'll go second.
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. We have a draft form, March 3rd minutes. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, may I have a motion to approve them? So, a second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Any correspondence or announcements? The only announcement I would make is that the Town Board at its last meeting constituted a Planning and Zoning Review Committee to look at process largely, to see if there are any efficiencies or improvements that can be made for both planning and zoning to make it easier on planning board members, easier on applicants. And I suspect that that will lead to some discussions about potential zoning changes, definitions that are missing from the definition tables and all of that. So, I would encourage all of you with your review of applications, if you stumble on things that you think, I mean, one of those comes to mind is that now the number of mini-split applications that are coming in, things like that. If there are things that you know that you could do, that you feel can be improved upon, now would be the time to start jotting them down and getting them to Jim. He's got a good list of them that we've been collecting over the years, so anything that you think of, please pass them along.
How was that committee constituted?
I think it's still being worked on. All I saw at the, all that was on the agenda at the meeting was the creation of the committee. I know I've been asked to serve on it, there are a couple of Town Board members, I believe the new attorneys, Michael Zarin. I don't know the full complement, but...
So, it's going to be a flamboyant billionaire who's going to fire a bunch of us, is it?
I don't know many, but I believe Jim is going to be on there. Are you a flamboyant billionaire? Okay. And quite likely will enlist Brian Tam as well, who is the gatekeeper in many ways for you know, his own law. It's in the works. So, we can go ahead this evening then with new applications. The first new application for this evening is that of Justin McCloud, 546 Old Portonburg Road, construction of a single-family dwelling and a garage.
Does anybody have a copy of the application?
Yes. Well, good, if you're covering the microphone, introduce yourself and announce what you'd like to do.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carl Hansen. I am an architect and project manager for the Artis Building, representing our clients, Justin and Kate McCloud, for our project at 546 Old Portonburg Road. Yep. Great, okay, so we're here for a site plan application for 546 Old Portonburg Road. It's located on Old Portonburg Road, just south of Schultz Road. It is one of, it's part of the historic Markart Farm property, and it is one of three lots that were subdivided in 2007, and it is the middle of those two. The site, I should say, we are proposing a new 5,989 square foot five-bedroom home with a new detached 1,479 square foot four-car garage. And it also includes a new septic system. And one thing I should note is that the site was previously approved for a four-bedroom home and septic system for that size. But upon our pre-con meeting with the planning board, and there are notes that the office in the design would be also considered a bedroom, the client decided to make better use of the basement, add a bedroom, and consider the office, and seek approval for a six-bedroom septic system. That has already been proposed and submitted to the DOH. And as of last Friday, we actually received our comments back, which were minor in nature, and have submitted our responses back. So, we expect hopefully an approval from them soon. We've also submitted to the DEC for jurisdiction determination on January 19th, which is subject to a 90-day review, so we also expect to see that before potentially the next planning board meeting. One thing to note is that with the new setbacks and wetlands determinations by the DEC, this property's proposal does meet all of those new jurisdiction determination requirements, so we are still as of right, even with the new setbacks, as given stated. You can see that number one on the list here is our proposed home, and number two is the attached garage behind it. Number five is the septic system that's also behind that, and all are outside of the wetland 100-foot boundary. And then along the road, there are number three is our driveway serving all of that. Number four is proposed new swamp maples along Old Portonburg to maintain the current context of the old farm context, the old farm real context, as well as number six is some vegetative screening for the heat pumps that would be serving the new home. Go to the next slide. Thank you. Construction of the site, the site itself is mostly flat, open land. One thing to note is that there was previously a Dutch barn that was part of the Markart Farm development, located on the northeast corner of this. But the barn was removed at some point between 1980 and 1990, according to the partial access areas that we found. And we've also commissioned a Phase 1A survey by Beth Selig of Hudson Cultural Resources, who's completed that to date, and has found no trace of the barn or its foundation on her initial visit. And she recommends that a Phase 1B is not necessary, given some of the previous work that she had done across the street for the other property.
Do you have that report?
It has been submitted, yes, you should please refer to that for all of her notes. She also notes in that that Chippewa has no archaeological concerns with low sensitivity areas, which is what she's dealing with. There are also existing stone walls and piers along Old Portonburg Road, which we plan on maintaining and preserving. But it should also be noted that they were built after 2000, from what we can see from the partial access areas as well. So, they are not necessarily historic to the site, but we plan on preserving those as well. I can move on to the next slide. Our proposal includes pretty simple landscaping to align with the historical period of the original farm. You'll see, as I noted before, the continuation of swamp maple row along Old Portonburg Road. And it also, you know, references the project across the street to serve an example of quite substantial landscaping intent for how they intend to, you know, deal with this As I mentioned, the existing stone wall we preserved and repaired as needed. And there are also, we'd like to see a tar and chipped driveway as well. All the walking paths would be set blue stones. Any, the minimal amount of lighting that we would provide, path lighting along those would be all copper downlights and also shielded from the sky, so dark sky compliant. And then minimal vegetation to, in private areas around the dining room on the south here, as well as up north, northwest of the house to shield the heat pumps and a little bit along with that inner lawn as well. Okay, next slide, please. We do have a few trees that are proposed for removal. There are 15 in total, and there are a mix of locusts, which you see in the green, located primarily at the house. And then there are a couple of cherries along the driveway, and as well as some cedars back in the septic area. But all of these are, one thing to note is that they were assessed at winter, so it's a little difficult to fully assess their health. However, we are only removing trees in the line of construction and nothing beyond that. And then, as I mentioned before, the owner's intent is to, you know, landscape the property well and in the context of the surrounding, the old farm, farmland, and similar to what they did across the street. Next slide, please. So, the house on the left is the proposed basement plan, made up primarily of a large media room. And then, as I mentioned, they did add a bedroom down there, per the comments from the pre-con meeting. The first floor is made up mostly of the public spaces, kitchen, living, dining, a bedroom, an entry area, as well as an office and laundry space. And the second floor, two bedrooms plus a bunk room with supporting bathrooms as well. And as I mentioned before, they did add the fifth bedroom mainly because they already knew they'd have to go back and resize the septic and reapply for that. So, they have large families and want to be able to accommodate on both sides of their family, to have their family come and visit and be housed when they get out. As far as materials, the intention is for the home to look like an older farm home that's been added to over the years. So, you'd have your kind of initial block, and then maybe the dining room added off the side, and then off the back, a low one-story addition. So, it's meant to fit in with the historical context around and the thought process that people would have added to over years at multiple times on many historical properties around. And it also is, its intent is to match the development and feel across the street where they've already completed some projects. Next slide, please. For materials, they'll be also taking material cues from the house across the street, so we'll be looking at painted clavred siding, copper half-round gutters, cedar shingle roof. All of the lighting on the house, the wall sconces would be similar to a gas-style lantern, but electrified. And then the stone veneer, native stone veneer, stack stone at the foundation walls, and the chimney would have a running brick pattern. Next slide, please. Similarly with the garage, it's really a simple gable structure and with four carriage doors, really again, same thing, taking material cues from across the street. Next slide, please. And this includes things like natural silver pine clavred siding, which will age naturally gray out to look old fairly quickly, a cedar shingle steel roof, copper half-round gutters, stained marvin ultimate foot windows with simulated divided lights, same stacked native stone veneer, and stained wood garage doors, and similar lantern-style sconces. I think that's the last slide I have, that's the general overview of the project.
Jim?
Okay, so I took a look at this, and as I put my notes, I think it's primarily a discussion of, you know, historic preservation consistency with the property neighborhood character, but I did find some questions and comments that I wanted to raise. The first one is regarding the garage, and I talked about this in pre-con, I just think because you are showing... This is the garage space here, I just think it needs to be added, to state that there is no loft area in the garage, right? You're not planning?
Yeah, no, not at all.
Yes, I think something just needs to be added, there's no loft area, just to be clear. That's not proposed, so there wouldn't be anything there. I did notice the garage is proposed to be 21 feet high. Unfortunately, per the accessory structures section, it can only be 20 feet high, so we're going to have to look at dropping that down by foot or maybe for variance.
The 21 is to the peak is the building height not measured by the average building height on a gable structure such as this?
You'll need the average of 20?
Well, if the peak is at 21, then the average would be the middle of that between the low even, right? So, it'd be somewhere around 17.
Okay. I'll take a second to look at that, but let me double-check that with the code.
Okay.
Make sure we're good there. You have the existing well shown plans. I didn't know if you're proposing to use that or draw a new one, but it didn't appear that it was going to be outside of, I think where the septic, it's kind of right up against the edge. Are you using this existing well?
We do plan on using the existing well.
Okay.
Yep.
The...
That's just showing the radius required for that.
Right, it's right on the line, you know, just, you know, obviously, the kind of help the firm will take a look at this, just make sure you've got that 100-foot separation from the well. I didn't see any lighting proposed, I know you have a cut, but didn't see where you're going to put the lighting on the home or the garage. Typically, I like to see those on the elevations, so if you just note on the elevations, I think, didn't see any. I'm just saying around doors, I think, I didn't see any.
Yes, sorry, so, I was going to point it out, so the, yeah, it would just be one wall sconce along the door here, and then on the other elevations, we have a sconce at the end of the covered tree right here at the secondary end. And then if you go to the garage, it'd be the same, just a single sconce by the...
Yeah, those just need to be added to the plans, just to show where they're going to be for clarity. And then I did notice, looking at the cut that you have here of the light itself, that does not look dark sky compliant to me, unless this is a panel, unless it looks like glass. Just make sure it is dark sky compliant. And double-check on that. What else?
Two, three.
What's that?
Two, three.
Yeah, so, there are a couple, there's one biggest I'll get to in a second, but here you're showing, you haven't, you know, here, it looks like you're proposing to just kind of remove the gravel on the edges here, but my assumption is you're pretty much removing all these except where it overlaps here. Just a little bit of clarity, I mean, is this whole thing being removed in terms of the existing?
It is, right now it's just a construction entrance, so it's a very large aggregate, it'll be removed.
Yeah, I think just some clarity on the note, that's going to be removed from there, that this would be made into grass or something, it would just be good on the landscape plan, just to know what is going to go there.
Okay.
Wetland buffer, you did show the buffer, I guess they labeled it as a buffer, just kind of shown as this graded area, so just a label with the 100-foot arrow, just labeling it as a wetland buffer. And I think you showed the flags, I'm not sure, but I did not see an actual wetland flagging report, usually when Mike and I keep, I think Mike will keep at this one, right? Usually when he does, he provides a wetland report, or is the flagging plan. So, we just need the details on that, when it was flagged, and then any other details he has for that flagging. I'd recommend silvings being placed along the 100-foot buffer, particularly in proximity to the proposed septic area here, when you're digging, just to make sure you don't have any issues with the silvings again. And then the biggest issue that I did identify, took a look at this, is that this property is actually bordered on two sides by a road. And that, in my opinion, but I'm going to double-check the zoning, that's where you basically have two front yards, and accessory structure can't be in front of the principal structure on a lot. So, it's behind it, when you're talking about Portonburg Road, but in front it, we're talking about 9G. So, I think you're going to have to go to the ZVA for variance. I need to double-check with ZA, make sure that he agrees, because I can't interrupt the law, but I believe that these are both three front yards.
Okay, so we do need the front yard reports, setting requirements.
Oh, you need the setting requirements, it's just that you can't have an accessory structure in front of a principal structure, and you have two roads, which means you have two front yards, which means it doesn't matter where you put down the lot, you're going to have this issue.
So, there is quite a bit of screening across 9G there.
That's not the issue, it's the law states you can't put an accessory in front of a principal structure, straight up. So, for it to be located anywhere behind a line, you know, kind of here, between here and this road, it would be considered this front yard, and between here and this road, it would be considered that front yard. So, really, the only way you might be able to get it without beating a variance would be to place it directly across from the house and not extend past the plane of that house. But I don't know if you have setback distances to do that without kind of reconfiguring everything. So, like I say, if you can't really put it very many places on the site without beating their variance, but that's just the way the law is written, so.
Would that require us to go to zoning and then come back?
Well, the planning board wouldn't be able to afford it, so you have a determination from the zoning board for this.
We can continue to review.
Right.
You just can't prove if you need the variance until you get the variance.
And then just one other quick one, the pre-con is probably labeled the garage as 1,400 square feet, and this one is labeled as 1,479, just wanted to make sure this is the numbers. Not that big deal, just make sure, you know, what size the garage is going to be when it goes to construction.
Yeah, it is accurate now, pre-con was just initial as we were working through it.
I can figure that one out.
Yeah.
Any board members, questions?
You had said that you couldn't locate the historic barn on the property?
The former location of the... Yeah, well, no remnants have been found of it, yes. We had the Phase 1A survey done, and our consultant found no, nothing, no evidence of it.
They do, did they just do the grid, or did they put units where they suspect, because you have the aerials, and you would kind of know from there about where it is.
Right.
You might be able to find an old horseshoe or, you know, some kind of remnant.
Yeah, so, they did not complete the 1B yet, which is there when they would go out and do the grid of one-foot depth diggings. However, because the site has previously been graded and leveled quite a while ago, back when they were demolished or removed sometime in the 80s, 90s, or prior to 1990, she just feels that there's, it's not going to be worth the time, effort, or the client's money to do so, also given the previous survey she did for the sites across the street where she found out archaeological evidence. So, based on that, in addition to that, the comments in the report are clear that she doesn't feel it's necessary and doesn't feel like she would find anything. There's already been a certain amount of soil that's been laced over it and graded a couple of times, and that survey as well only goes about a foot deep, so she's quite, feels pretty strongly that it wouldn't be necessary.
Yeah, this is part of that Markart Farm...
Yes.
...national register property.
Correct.
And the placement of the farm buildings is part of understanding the importance of that historic site. And it's unlike other sites that we find elsewhere in the town. This is a specifically important location, and I just, I think it's unfortunate that that evidence is being erased.
Well, I, I mean, that, based on her feedback, the evidence was already erased. That's, that's part of what her findings indicate, is that, that the previous, when they were demolished previously back in the, I think we believe it was sometime in the, between 1980 and 1990, the site. And this was prior to the current owner's ownership of the site, that everything was wiped out and that was...
So, that the barn shows up on partial access?
I'm sorry?
Does it show up on one of the historic aerials?
The barns do, yes, prior to 1980.
Have you laid the footprint of that barn on this site plan?
I haven't shown it here, but it's essentially...
No, could we see it, I mean, could you lay it on the site plan for us, so we could look at that?
We can, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Because then I think that would help us to understand and to put the comments from your archaeologists in context, if we can see where that lay in terms of where your construction is going to be.
Yep.
That might answer some questions for us. I'd like to, you know, we'll see how that works out, and perhaps we'll circle back, and you have not scheduled her to do 1B, is that correct?
No, and she wasn't ready to do that until the ground thawed anyway, so...
Okay, so we've got some time to think that, think that through.
We do.
Good. All right. Anybody else? Any other questions? Okay. Jim, I think if there's anything else, you have a draft procedural resolution?
Yep. A draft procedure resolution from the board's consideration for the application of Justin McCloud for site plan approval under Town Code Chapter 125 for construction of a new home, attached garage, and associated infrastructure, 546 Old Portonburg Road, within the RC 5. Accepting the application supporting documents is adequate for further review. Classifying the actions type 2, for which coordinated environmental quality review is not required. Schedule the public hearing for May 19th at 6:05.
It'll be April 21st.
Jumping a little ahead, April 21st. Just going to try to get ahead. At 6:05, we'll send this to CAV for review, we'll send it to HCPAC for review, we're just kind of planning, because there's a site plan, and we need planning board members to do a site analysis.
Okay. Chen?
I'll go.
Okay. All right, may I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution? So, a motion is second, all those in favor? I have closed, extension, motion carries. They will be reaching out to you, schedule the time for the site.
Would I be able to also get a copy of...
Sure.
Thank you.
Next up this evening is the application from Ryan Beck Villas LLC, New York State Route 9G and Middle Road.
Good evening, my name's Sean Kemp, I'm here to represent the applicant tonight, Ryan Beck Villas LLC. You may recall, we were last before the planning board, I believe, in December 2024, and that was really with an eye towards getting the project back on track. You may recall also that we had previously put in an application, probably, that might have been 2019. But in any event, since the last meeting, we've been able to get comments from Jim, and we also were able to digest some of the comments that the board made at the last meeting, and we did additional submissions at the end of February. Hopefully, gentlemen of the boards had an opportunity to review those submissions. And I have with me here tonight Andrew Paulus, he's an owner and member of Ryan Beck Villas LLC, Rob Dupont is the project architect, Skid Francis, he's the lead civil engineer for Creighton Manning, and then we have the project engineer Tyler Garrity, also from Creighton Manning. So, we do have some more housekeeping items that we need to get through, I think, before we can go to a public hearing, but I think based on the most recent submissions, there's been a considerable amount of work done, and if you have any questions, we're more than happy to answer those questions.
Did you, we received late today correspondence from the DEC, did you receive that as well?
I did not receive that correspondence, that was an email that came in a little shortly after 4 o'clock, does that sound about right? So, Andrew Paulus notified me of that, just as I was coming into the meeting. I think that we have some work to do with respect to the DEC, but we did receive that recently.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you did.
No, thank you.
All right, how would you like to proceed?
I think Rob, if you wanted to walk us through some of the updated drawings, that'd probably be most beneficial to get things kicked off. Sure.
I think also, at our urging, you've also met with Bryant Knack, is that correct?
I did, yes.
And that resulted in some changes?
Not any changes that we've reflected, not any changes that we've reflected in the drawings to date, but he did have some good suggestions. We reviewed that with the engineers, and I'd like to discuss that as part of our discussion tonight as well.
Okay, please, as you're going through it tonight... Okay, please, as you're going through it tonight, share with the board those things that the fire department recommended.
Okay. Well, first of all, good evening, everybody. St. Patrick's Day, we're all Irish out there. This is the site plan that basically shows a more developed version of what we presented back in December, okay? This is our development area. Our overall property is about thirty and a half acres. Here's your nine G. This is Four Brothers Restaurant right here. What we're proposing is a cluster of buildings in the southern part of the property. It's a hotel motel. It's allowed use by zoning. We're proposing four buildings total. This is an administration building. It has a lot of business use in it and maintenance and other things. I'll get to that in more detail. And then we have three different hotel buildings. There are a lot of restrictions on this property, both by the extent of wetlands, as well as two-hundred-foot setbacks from nine G in the Gateway North area. And the buildings are restricted to no larger than eight thousand square feet. We're restricted to a maximum of sixty hotel rooms. So we've taken all that into account and the plans have been developed to a much higher degree than when we presented back in December. Now, this is part of the site plan drawings. Jim, Matt Jared, do you want me to start with the buildings? Or would you like the engineers to go through the site? Because there's a lot of engineering information in this particular set that they're more qualified to answer. Do you have a preference?
No, I don't, does anybody?
Well, I want to rip right into the building then. That's okay, buildings. It might be a different file, Jim, that you got on the drop box. But you do go like architectural drawings. There you go. Well done. Okay. So there's a series of drawings here. We tried to make every attempt to clarify a lot of the questions and concerns that the board had the first time we presented this project back in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. First of all, this, this basically shows the different type of hotel rooms that the buildings are going to be composed of, basically the kernel of the buildings. We really only have two different types of hotel rooms. We have a double and we have a single. Now, modulally, they're about the same module that fit into the buildings. They're about fifteen, this is rough numbers, about fifteen feet wide, twenty-six feet long, okay? The distinction is, in the double room, we have a larger sleeping area, which can accommodate two beds, two queen beds. In the single room, we've actually provided an outdoor balcony. Taken six feet of the depth out, created a room that's now twenty by fifteen, which can accommodate a single bed, king, queen, you know, whatever. Other than that, the rooms are pretty much identical. They all have bathrooms in the same area. And they basically stack up over two stories side by side. They're serviced by a covered walkway, which, if you go to the next slide, Jim, you'll see that. Some more detailed floor plan of the buildings. This happens to be hotel building number one of the three. It's actually a hybrid between a hotel and a motel type of building. It's a motel in that each of the hotel rooms has a distinctive entrance, okay? And it's up there all accessed by, as you probably see in hotels, covered but unenclosed walkway, access walkway. However, it's more like a hotel in that each building, due to functional reasons such as housekeeping, elevator for handicapped access, egress stairs, and just a more commodious entrance, we have a separate lobby. Actually, this is the first floor, a big part. This is the first floor plan, this is the second floor plan. A lobby, which is actually conditioned. So in the folks park, exactly, we have a covered area here where the park members want to go as well. Come into the lobby area, just large enough for a little bit of a waiting area, some information area. We have housekeeping, egress stair, and then an elevator. If they're on the second floor, for example, they go up in an elevator stairs. They now come outside and then they access the hotel rooms through individual entrances. We did this because of the eight thousand square foot threshold of the buildings. I did meet with Brian Tam to make sure that definition was clear. Eight thousand square foot gross floor area, which is defined as measured from the inside of the exterior walls. So by taking out square footage for balconies, by taking out this corridor here, we were going to get the buildings down. Actually, these buildings are about seventy-five, seventy-six hundred, so they're below the eight thousand square foot threshold. That's the same for all three of them. They have two meter degraths, so they have an outside staircase as well as the inside staircase. And Jim, if you go to the next slide, each building is somewhat distinctive. This happens to be building number two. We've taken the same building, basically broken into two wings. We still have all the same. We still have the same accessories, but because of the contours and restrictions of the site, we divided the building into two equal wings. So same area, same, something like that. Jim, next one, please. This is the administration building, the first building that you come to. Actually, I have a study model that I'd be happy to pass along if anybody would like to see it. It might make it a little easier to understand. Anybody interested?
Sure.
Now, it's a study model, so it's not an exact representation. But it basically shows the mass and the placement of buildings on the site in relation to nine G. The administration building is two and a half stories. Still complies with building height, still complies with less than eight thousand square foot of the building. But this is actually a mixed-use building. So everything that isn't specific hotel rooms is in this building. On the ground floor here, okay? The building actually acts as a portal to the site. So the traffic actually runs through the building, goes over top of an access roadway. We have our hotel lobby and check-in over here, as well as our business office. So this is business use here, okay? On the opposite side of the road, this is basically our storage and our maintenance portion of the building. The grounds are near required maintenance and with light bulbs out, things like that, there will be a full-time employee here basically taking care of the facility. That's what this is for. On the second floor up here, we are providing a restaurant for breakfast for the guests, okay? This area here is where they will eat. It's accessed by both a grand staircase as well as an elevator. And then this section here contains bathrooms, egress stair, restaurant, and then basically the food buffet area, okay? This is all roof down here. And there's one other interesting portion of this building. As allowed by use in zoning ordinance, we are allowed to have one resident apartment. In fact, Jim, you had asked about this in the last notes that you had submitted to us. On the top floor, we are providing one resident apartment for an onsite staffer. This person will either be the hotel manager or be the maintenance person, right? Now, this is a gray area in the zoning ordinance in that there, it doesn't really talk about this specifically. It talks about resident apartments in houses, but not in commercial buildings like this. So I had to work with Brian Tam to basically find criteria that was closest fit for what our situation is. There's no restrictions on bedrooms, but we are restricted, in his opinion, to a thousand square feet of habitable space. So this area here is thousand square foot of habitable space, as defined by space for living, cooking, eating, like that. And that's on the top there. Just one more cell. Now, this diagram basically shows the height of the building and the composition of its spaces. All buildings are in compliance with the building height. In fact, the definition is from average grade to the midpoint of a pitch roof. So the tallest building, which is the administration building, just hits the thirty-five foot mark. All the hotel buildings are lower, they're the twenty-two and a half feet. They all are two-story. One more distinction that you'll see in the model, which is illustrated by this and this, is this happens to be the sections for building, for hotel buildings, one and two. They're basically at standard grade. As the site slopes to the south, you've taken the last building and you've actually set it down to the grade. So from the interior of the property, it only appears to be one story tall. So you actually come in on the upper level and then you would go down to get to the other floor though. So it's an inversion of that. The, as far as the administration building is concerned, our pass-through here more than meets DOT standards as far as clearances, vertical clearances for any kind of truck, fire truck, anything like that, delivery truck. And now I'd like to talk about what Brian Mapp said. So I met with Bryant very shortly after you and I met at Chris's office. I showed him the site plan and, you know, basically firefighters have two primary concerns. How many different ways are there to get into the site with their apparatus? And do they have access around all sides of the building, okay? He was happy to see that we didn't have access around all four sides of all of our buildings. So that was good. However, and now actually, Jim, I need you to go back to the site plans, please. And then I'll take it to you, Skip. The shooter hit tech. Keep going, please. There's a more specific site plan. It's not a, that's a good one. So here's our access in. And I'll let Skip talk about this in more detail. But this is our primary access in. We pass through this building and then they have free access to all the core of the property, as well as being able to get around the buildings, you know, especially on foot. What Bryant's concern was, was if this building has a problem, this building's on fire, they have a block, they can't get into the rest of the site. So, so I acknowledge that shortcoming, right? And what I was asking about was if we provided, you know, we provided, you may recall, we have a secondary access road over here. It's just basically a gravel road and that's designed to access the sewage treatment plant as well as the water wells. So that's not going to be accessed by anybody except for these, you know, professional service persons, go back to that. What I mentioned to Bryant was, you know, here's middle road right here. This is all our property, although this is the wetlands buffer. What I suggested to him was if we put, you know, there's a lot of shale area here in the front of the property already. If we put a service drive right here that could go between these two buildings, you would have a breakaway barrier, it would not be paved, it would be some kind of permeable surface. So it'd look natural, but it was able to support the weight of a fire truck loaded with water. Then, in the unlikely event that this building, you know, will create a block here, they would have a second way into the site. He was happy with that suggestion. I told him we'd discuss it with the board and also with our engineers and see if we could come up with a solution like that. So that was a result of our conversation. And now, does anybody have any questions specifically about the building? Buildings? Okay. Skip, you want to talk about it?
Good evening. My name's Skip Francis with Creighton Manning Engineering, the project manager from the civil engineering perspective side of the project. Just wanted to point out some of the things that we have made progress on work-wise that Sean had mentioned since we had last been in front of the board in December. One of the things was a reduction in the parking. In the early, earlier phases of the project, it had as many as one hundred and nineteen spaces. And at a meeting in November, some notes from this planning board suggested that we evaluate a more appropriate parking ratio. And we found a publication for hotel developments and we cited that publication and in short, reduced the parking on-site to eighty-four parking spaces, down from one hundred and nineteen. Those spaces are compliant for the guests, the employees, and some handicapped accessible. The statistics are, should I let that go share? There you go. Are here on the site layout plan sheet C four. So that's, that's an improvement since the last time we were here. Another thing is the wastewater disposal system. Previous application or presentation showed a septic bed out here in the front. We scrapped that idea. We've gone to a package treatment plant, which following the access road out to the north from the circle, our team member consultant, H2M Inc., has selected a wastewater package treatment plant. They coordinated with the Dutchess County Department of Health and they have issued correspondence, just simply says they favor this idea, they favor this unit. It is a self-contained unit that would supply the treatment services for this project. We presently, this app, the consultant, H2M, has made a application to DEC and even the county had supplied some helpful instructions to what to include to DEC. That is a responsive letter that this board received today was the, while the application says it's incomplete, there are items that have yet to be, to run its course, one of which is seeker negative determination from this board. The other is jurisdictional determination on wetlands from DEC. I'll get to that in just a moment. And the other is a ship of coordination. So those are items that are in, to follow, but they're not insurmountable or stopped, which is at this point. Further north on this access road is out where the well site is. And the team consultant for that is WSP. They prepared a report, so the seventy-two hour pumping test report dated last January that proves that there's enough capacity in this well to serve this development. So those are some progresses we've made with wastewater and wells. And if you could go back to the overall site plan, that would be helpful, this will work. Preliminary stormwater management is intended to be in the southern end of the property, the, for treatment and detention, according to the latest general permit requirements issued revised in twenty twenty-five January and the latest erosion control law manual for New York State. The, and the other item is wetlands. The wetland buffer is shown on all the plans with the dash line around the property. While there are no physical disturbances to the water courses themselves, the permit requested by the town is within the same permit, sorry, the same buffer dimension as DEC's buffer, which is a hundred feet. While no physical structures or are in the buffer area, there is some grading that needs to be done, some mild tree clearing just around the perimeters, just to get it back to original grade. And that's just out here on the fringes. Nonetheless, the permit isn't required and we're open about that. It's just mild grading and tree clearing. As minimalistically as possible, but it's necessary to keep buildings out of the area and get back to grading. Those are the key points of the major nuggets that I wanted to share with you from the site civil perspective. Progress that's been made since late last year to think through and work through more feasible solutions that we can move forward from for our final design. This is all still preliminary, but nonetheless feasible. And we've had some proactive dialogue with agencies like Dutchess County Health Department and DEC. I will touch on back to wetlands for a minute. We do have a wetland jurisdictional determination request that was submitted in January and we're expecting that answer to be somewhere later this month, early Janu-, uh, early, excuse me, later this month or early April. So that request is in process right now and on its way. So, any questions on site or?
Oh, Jim, go first.
Well, I guess I just want to ask, I forgot to schedule a public hearing. I have, I think that the plan's come a long way since we talked last time and it's great to have some detailed questions and answers. Do you want to go through those or if we're still in kind of a sketch phase or just want to submit these to the applicant? And you guys can ask some questions and we can work through the details later.
I thought Sean earlier was suggesting you weren't quite ready to go to public hearing.
Yeah, I think we're going to look to the board for a little bit of guidance, too. There are some things that we need to do, obviously, in order to, as Skip mentioned, to get past the preliminary stage to the final stage. But we'd like to approach this in a manner that's most efficient, you know, not only for the applicant's perspective, but also from the board's perspective. So if there's things, some big-ticket items that you think that we should clear out of the way before a public hearing, we're more than willing to do so to help facilitate an efficient process. efficient process.
It looks like Jim's got seven pages of notes.
No, no, not for that. Okay. I got two.
Only two and a half.
No, the gray notes were, well, we see looking. We've been asking, but again, if you have more work to do, we're not asking for a public hearing. I don't know if we necessarily need to spend time for these tonight versus you guys can take a look at them or look at it last time after the sketch discussion. And then obviously we can talk about it if you want to. I think we've gone a long way. A lot of these are just kind of little things. I mean, one of the big ones I found was the fire department. I saw the same thing. There's a fire in that main building. How did I get there? So I was suggesting a second access as well to make sure we can get around that. Parking was good, the traffic study, the phase 1A is often submitted. Put in all of your requests for other permits. The one thing I don't know that I haven't seen is, or if you were, Dutchess County just developed an aquifer law. It passed in October of last year, I believe, and it only really applies to commercial, non-residential applications. So depending on what you do have going on in the maintenance shed and activities on site, you may be subject to that new regulation by Dutchess County as the health department. So you're going to want to catch up with them on the aquifer law to see what that may or may not, may or may not be required for that. I'll give you for that. But otherwise, like I said, I do have some things to hear some questions about a couple of things. I think generally if they want to spend the time, we can just kind of go forward.
I think I'll be able to do that. Work for you.
Yeah, that works for us. Yeah, sure. Yeah. Just a couple of things, though, if we can just clarify. I know that we did have a previous application pending. Did the planning board declare itself lead for secret purposes?
No, that was the last thing I wanted to discuss. We are going to have to put up with the agency and do the NOI. So we do have to discuss one and how we want to get forward with that when we incorporate time. And we have accepted the application. We did do a procedure resolution quite a while ago. We just never moved to that step in the NOI because of the discussions.
What do you think, Kim? I would say that if the applicant's going to kind of move forward in terms of making this more complete application, let's hold off on circulating until we kind of have that more complete application.
Is there, my concern is, is that then we could be disjointed a little bit because it's my understanding we'd have to wait for 30 days after that, right? Before we could move forward.
The, once the planning board declares itself to be the agency, it's a 30-day period for any involved agencies or interested agencies to comment on. You can still, I mean, I think if you start, if you circulate through the agency, you know, it still starts the process, you know? I don't think seeker's going to be done at that meeting. It usually takes a little while before it's decided.
It's just the NOI is just the condition.
All right, so I think we can wait on that.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm just speaking with Skip. With respect to the application going to the town, I think it's, it's in a pretty complete form because some of the missing pieces are relying on the DEC, which we, you know, we can fill in. But it would be nice if we could go through, we believe, the DEC aspect of it.
I don't think we were prepared to do that this evening.
Okay.
Well, not today. I mean, I'd have to write it all up. It's a lengthy document. I can certainly, if you want to ask me to draft that, people might want to.
Well, why don't we, why don't we look to have that draft?
Yeah, we can maybe have it ready for the next meeting.
It's just pretty standard form document, just we have to include the details of this project, but I haven't drafted that.
Sure. Just moving forward and I regard, regardless, greatly appreciate it. So thank you for that. So is it fair to say then the archaeological upload to SHIP hasn't been done, SHIP? Because at the last meeting, I think.
It was done in 2019. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I don't think it was.
Did you, one of the things I recall, and I might not have this information right, but there was questions asked sometime in the past, I can't even tell you when, about some testing that was being done on the property. Was there any sort of drilling or digging holes on the property or testing of any kind in the past? Yes, what was that for?
Well, I think it was two summers ago. We had done some exploratory digging in that front area to see if it was viable for a septic system.
And no archaeology was part of that?
No, 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 no. There was an independent archaeological study that was performed. No, nothing major was found. That's all in the report.
What, the study, and good dates to when?
I believe it's 2022. I believe we did meet.
And that was a full study of the entire property?
Yes, I believe we submitted the archaeological on, no, October 27, 2024. So it should be in the first and middle of February, but in the winter for the December meeting.
So the question is, has that been sent up to SHIP? That was your question?
Yes, we just wanted to confirm whether it has or hasn't been.
I don't think it has been.
Okay.
I'm not seeing anything like this.
Chair and board, I had asked that question back in December. It's the planning board's responsibility to cement that with SHIP, correct?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll circle that internally and see if it looks like that. It's not in Chris.
The other digging that you may be referencing is just from the, we're doing the well.
And maybe, I just wanted to confirm that those, those test holes that were dug were in accordance with the archaeological report that you had.
Okay. Correct.
Was your work, whether it was well testing or whatever, was that guided by the archaeological report?
No, it was independent of that. But they had already, the archaeological study had already happened long before that. There were no areas of concern in what we were doing in the service.
We'll dig that out.
Okay. Only question I have is getting CPL involved for engineering review of this project. I think it's time to bring CPL in as the town engineer to take a look at this from engineering. There's a lot here that goes beyond what I do as a planner that I think they should take a look at. I guess if you're okay with that, if the planning board want to do that.
I guess it's timing. We would like you to feel comfortable that what we're sending on to CPL is not going to change significantly, that the required going back and forth to CPL to make it the most cost-effective and efficient.
So we would have no objection to sharing with your town designated engineer. We feel that these items have been fleshed out sufficiently enough to become feasible and viable to then go forward. So if you get their early comments on things right now, it'll help us get towards final design.
Okay, and this is, you're then authorizing that this will go through escrow or we refer it to CPL?
That's correct.
That's fine, and so we'll do that. Do we need a resolution or is this?
We just take a, I don't know, the board.
Is the board happy with sending this on at this point to CPL?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have consensus around that. And then once we've done that, we'll notify you. And at this point, with projects like this, we encourage you to be speaking directly with CPL. If you notify us that you're going to do that expedite some communication, making those review and raise questions, then we'll get a formal report from them, but by all means, talk to them in a neutral.
Very good. Thank you.
Planning board members, Jim, have covered everything. Is there any specific thing you want to address to the applicant at this time?
I have a question.
Sure.
The wastewater, the, what makes use?
We can't hear you.
The wastewater treatment plant makes use of an existing stream, is that correct? Or no?
To pre-discharge. Yes, it does. And there was a question at the December meeting, might have been Craig, about the body of water that it was going to be discharged into.
Going to the Rydak Kill or does it go into the Snyder Small?
What do you mean?
I just dropped.
I didn't get the answer from our meetings because I went back with my notes. I don't want to misspeak, though. For some reason, I think it might be the Kill.
Yeah.
But I'll be sure to get that information to you. I just don't want to misspeak and try things now.
And if there's a restaurant next door, is there a pathway for your customers to go to the restaurant?
You're referencing Four Brothers?
Yes. And we were specifically asked to do that and we added that to the site plan. So there's a walkway that goes right to Four Brothers, which they were delighted to hear about, actually.
Yeah, I actually put in my notes, I want to applaud the effort of putting that in. I think it will keep people from, one, getting on 9 to drive up on their feet, or even from walking on the shoulder of 9, I'm sorry, 9G, which is not safe. And I did know in there that I think we as a town, we as a town, should talk to Four Brothers about whether or not they want to finish that last couple of feet on their property so that people will be able to go all the way there. They can't work off-site, not agreements or whatever. But I think it gets, it gets right to the edge of the property, it's just not that far, maybe 10 or 12 feet to get over to the park and allow the paved areas. So I think it'd be worth reaching out to see if we can get that connection made so you have a full sidewalk connection all the way there. And then regarding that sidewalk, I mean, it comes all the way from all of the internal sidewalks around. You did have a gap here, I put that in my notes. I'd like to see that actually as a sidewalk, even if that means you have to provide some kind of paved apron here to protect the road, but that's a technical issue. We might as well get those. But yeah, that sidewalk connection, I think, is huge for a lot of people walking to Four Brothers. Because I think I'll see, we'll see a lot of that.
Jim, do you want us to talk to Four Brothers? We go there regularly now.
If you want to, that's fine. Let us know what you hear, absolutely.
Okay.
What sense of happy?
Yeah, they're very happy about it.
Anyone else? All right, so what we're doing now is scheduling another meeting, but not opening a public hearing.
That's a good note. It's a good, it's a good special.
Schedule, may I have a motion to schedule Rydak Villas for, what, was it April?
Where we went for the nominee? 21? 21.
April 21? The continuation of the discussion of the submission by Rydak Villas for April 21. And have a motion?
I'll make that.
Second? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
The third and fourth, the applications for receiving are being brought forward by the same applicant, but they are pre-stated on one of the stations. So first, Long Island Partners, Mazzol, Cedar Heights Road, two lots of division of the start.
Hi, everybody. How are you? Nice to see you all again. Mick Mazzol represents local land partners, also the neighbor who effectively is on the other side of the power lines. So this, I think, if you remember in the planning sessions, was really inspired by some of the changes that were happening in the neighborhood. My neighbor and I and two children live on this, this piece right here. And we, you know, as, as it became an opportunity to acquire the land to preserve the neighborhood, the objective here was to build essentially and subdivide into estate lots that would enable future builders to build, you know, family homes set back away from the street and preserving the overall bucolic nature of both this parcel and the larger parcel, which we will get into in the next segment. But the key here was, when we looked at this parcel given its overall size, was to keep them large enough to meet all of the current zoning, rural country five requirements, but then also to keep them, you know, malleable enough where you could, you could really build a custom home. But the idea here in particular was egress off of Pilgrim's Progress coming under the power line and then going up the side into the closest access point to the property. We have, since our pre-planning discussions, have had extensive conversations with Central Hudson and we have filed the applications as required by them to allow that egress to happen under the power line. The good news is that corner where you see Pilgrim's Progress and that driveway coming in, I own that corner. So part of what the egress adjustment here would be to allow the driveway to be accessed for Pilgrim's Progress to go under the line and then to go right up into, to these two lots. You'll also notice based on the topography that behind these two lots is a, a large rock wall. So these two homes are designed to be kind of right up against those. And then we also have, you know, the septic and well designs and of course with all of the requirements there, too. So I think the, the key thesis with this particular opportunity is to make the impact on the neighborhood as minimal as possible, to preserve the overall look and feel that's already there. And this, at this time, is the best option for access to that, to those two parcels.
And then Chris Montalto is also here. Does he have any questions?
Yeah, so I did take a look at this and I guess I still have the same concerns I had when we talked at the pre-conference meeting. And that is that I haven't seen anything in writing regarding the legality of subdividing landlocked lots. In the town, the code requires that lots have frontage on public road to get access. And no, we discussed this at the pre-con meeting, but I didn't see anything in the packet stating that we'd identified that this can actually be subdivided without that road frontage because it is taking access not only through, actually a parcel for the, the power lines, not even right away, it's a parcel, I think, for the utility line. And then coming out on obviously the other property that you own, coverage for Argus Road. So that, that's one major concern line that I have. The other one is that in order for this to happen, you will have to secure an open development area from the town. That's a requirement. You don't have frontage on a road that you get the town's approval by state law to subdivide a lot that doesn't have frontage directly by a road. So the ODA is at a minimum the first step that has to happen for this subdivision to move forward. But I still have questions about, you know, the legality because I just haven't seen anything stating that, that it can happen. And based on what I read in the code, I'm just not sure. So I've deferred in my memo to the planning board, you know, attorneys to give us some additional guidance. I think maybe you have talked about it in the past. I don't know, I just haven't seen anything in writing stating that we came to any consensus on the ability to actually subdivide the lot.
We did speak to John Lyons about this initially, and I have another meeting set with him to look into that. But we, we had some extensive discussions about giving a lot line adjustment with the neighbor. That did not work out. So the next step, according to John, was to look at this as part of getting an easement to go through the right of way there. So, so I'm going to speak to him again and then, you know, submit what, you know, according to his guidance.
Yeah, so I can come here, I mean, I think we're going to need some kind of clarity or, you know, okay from you guys that this can be subdivided?
Yeah.
The ODA is part of it and anything else?
Yeah, I haven't looked into this myself. I know that John has had conversations with you. He kind of filled me in a little bit today on his discussion. So I think that you said is, you know, I know he had recommended, see the lot line adjustment at the beginning was a feasible option. He does have, he did mention some concerns about accessing it through Central Hudson, just the development side of it. But, you know, we'll, we'll look into that and anything you have further on the Central Hudson application that you're working with.
And I've spoken to their attorneys as well and we're going to speak again, so I can, I can submit some more information on that.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, and then the only thing I'll just add is, you know, obviously the desired approach was to come off of the Cedar Heights side. We worked extensively to try to come to terms with that neighbor. We were unsuccessful. However, to be clear, it is not entirely clear to us that maybe the meets and bounds of this map are correct. And we are looking into if potentially this is not landlocked and that it actually does go to Cedar Heights. So we're, we're working with the engineers to determine if that's, if in fact maybe this map is not correct.
So those are three pretty big elements that I guess for this in terms of any discussion moving forward. If meets and bounds isn't right, that has to be identified. The ODA is going to have to be done if it is landlocked. I think there's no question about that. And then again, still have the question of legality. Some of you, you guys, you're going to have to work with John and make sure you're all in agreement that this can technically be subdivided. So again, I'm just not sure based on the way the codes are in the state, how to have that, that access or proper reasons. I just haven't seen that, right? That's kind of why I said, I do have some technical things related to it, but I don't know, want to open up for discussion about the higher level issues. Again, like earlier, if you want to go through the details, we just kind of punt on those until we get some clarification on the higher level issues.
I think those higher level issues have got to be resolved in the coming year forward. I, I don't think, I, I'm not inclined to move it forward to a public hearing at this time. I'd be inclined to, you know, schedule you again as a new application. We can have those, you know, we can talk about the date, but I think if you're going to have those questions answered, we can schedule you for next month. We can go two months out. I'm not sure what the timing will be. Kim, do you have any idea?
I mean, you know, we, we're certainly open to discussing it. So, I mean, if you want it set for April, we can work to be ready for that or at least moving it forward. We might still have open questions at that time, but. Or at least moving it forward, we might still have open questions at that time, but we'll keep the planning board and the applicant informed.
It would be helpful if we could keep them on that.
Um, but I can push my memory on the steps for the ODA, just so that the applicant is aware of what work has to go into that. That goes before the town board, it's not, it's not a quick process, so I want you to be aware of that.
I, I don't know, the, the details aren't, I haven't involved specifically in the ODA, but I know you'll essentially have to file a paperwork with the town, the town clerk, get it to the town board for review, they have to approve the ODA. And then what, if, if, when that ODA is accepted, then obviously we can move forward with discussion with subdivision. But that is certainly a big part of this. If you have frontage on Cedar Heights and you can take access from there, that may eliminate the use of that ODA. But I think those two items are probably the first ones.
Well, Jim, you would probably still need an ODA regardless for if the other lot, the, if, even if you get it off Cedar Heights, if that other lot is the, the southern lot is still not accessing Cedar Heights, then you probably still need ODA required.
Right. The, the, the synthetic design option that we had would be understanding that there would be some egress. Instead, we had flag lot, single driveways, and there was enough to do separate driveways for both, off of Cedar Heights if we were to come.
Off of.
Yeah, exactly. And we had, uh, our engineer had drawn essentially a flag lot into that and then a flag lot into that that allowed you to have separate driveways, not shared driveways in, in that.
Kim will take it over all that way, and that will give you information. Uh, so at this point, unless planning board members have other comments, I think we're ready to just, um, schedule this application to be on April seventeenth?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. May I have a motion to do so? So hope, second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion? Uh, that takes us to the second, uh, application from local land partners, uh, five. This is number five twenty-three, U308, with a ten lot subdivision. And this is a major subdivision as opposed to the previous one that we spoke about, which was minor.
So just, uh, again, kind of high level overview of this. Uh, again, I reside currently here and I'm the largest landowner neighbor of this entire parcel. And so part of the way that we had designed this, uh, also taking in consideration of the pre-leading feedback, was again, as estate lots, um, I use the word estate lot only by virtue of just how much land each one of these has and the ability to have the homes set back further from the street. Uh, again, designed with the idea of minimal impact from a visual standpoint. So in some cases, you wouldn't really even know, uh, if there was anything back there based on the way we designed it. Uh, it has approximately three driveways coming off of Pilgrim's Progress, um, which, uh, because I have most of the right-hand side of the street, there's, uh, plenty of room to bring those in. Uh, there also are, uh, one shared driveway off of Pilgrim's Progress and then on the three oh eight side, effectively one shared driveway off of the existing driveway and then another shared driveway, which would be a new driveway. Um, and again, looking at this from the perspective of, um, maintenance and overall access and the ability to make it very nice and, and very peaceful, um, and to kind of have a minimal impact on the overall landscape.
Jim?
Okay, um, similar to what you heard from me the first time around, um, there are some issues with this in terms of the submission and review process. Um, again, for this, because you have a couple of landlocked lots, you'll need an ODA as well on this one. So we are looking at that for the subdivision as well. Uh, I also wanted to note, we, I believe we did discuss, I'm pretty confident we discussed in the pre-conference, that the conservation subdivision is the default type of subdivision on a lot. This is more of a traditional subdivision where you parcel everything out in your large lots, houses spread across the property. In order for you to be able to do a lot layout like this, you have to be able to, by code, show the planning board the conservation subdivision doesn't work or why this is the better alternative. And if you want to do this alternative, you then have to provide the information why this alternative is the best. And essentially, what I've seen in the viewing this is that there's a multi-step process for either conservation subdivision or a traditional subdivision. And we don't have the paperwork for that multi-step process. It's kind of, you gave us this, this site plan, which is, I think, is the exact same one we had at the pre-con. We don't have any of the backups showing how a conservation subdivision should work or why this conventional subdivision works. We haven't gone through that multi-step process of identifying, you know, why you've come to this conclusion. So I don't believe that the process has been fully executed for the purposes of submission to the planning board. But even outside of that, we do have issues now of ODAs that would be required for the purpose of creating landlocked lots that then require easements over other properties to get access to the roads. So, um, I have a number of other, you know, detailed questions, but again, those are my, my big ones. I think there are five, by my count, if I'm correct, five lots that don't have frontage on a public road that would need an ODA for this subdivision. So half the subdivision would need an ODA.
And it's an incomplete application?
I believe so because we haven't seen the paperwork supporting the multi-step process.
And I can, I can submit that.
It's, it's detailed, there's a lot of work to be done. Um, and again, I, you know...
Well, just so you, but this is different than what we, I mean, there, there's similarities, but we did make a bunch of adjustments.
It's not a conservation subdivision or justification for why you're not doing a conservation subdivision.
Right, so I can, I, I think I did some of that, so I can, I can submit that.
Yeah, it's, it's a detailed process, it's laid out in the code.
Right.
And you essentially have to go through, effectively have to go through the entire conservation subdivision, um, multi-step process, and then come back to us and say, we did it, we don't like it, it doesn't, or it doesn't work, and this is why we want to do this. And then go through the conventional, traditional steps as well. So there's a bit of work that needs to be done, a lot of engineering, you know, engineering, certainly, um, layout analysis.
Okay.
Kind of what's being done. I, I think the board, okay, I can still provide my notes in terms of what I found in this.
I think you can provide your notes.
So you can see what I found within the elements, so you have that as you move forward.
Yeah.
You can see what I've discussed, but I do think that it's an incomplete application, unfortunately, at this point.
So we can give you the notes, um, and then when you have to just see the application, you can circle back to Gretchen and she will talk to you about getting scheduled as a new application when you have everything.
Okay, okay.
If, if, if other planning board members right now have any outstanding comments, that we inform them as they go forward, I would ask you to do that.
I think it'd be important to spend some time with the zone lot. And maybe the comprehensive plan as well.
I mean, I, I think part of the, you know, there's, there's a lot that can factor in here with the topography and, you know, part of the, the elements of, of where we've, we've put things, especially with the wetland consideration.
Well, that's what you will, after you've weighed out what the conservation subdivision would be, should be, that would be then what you would come back with to try to convince us why this is better than a conservation subdivision.
Okay.
Okay? Anyone else? All right, so now, there's no motion required from us, you're going to circle back to Gretchen when you believe you have an application. And I would encourage you to do as Ed just said, we just take a careful look at the comprehensive plan of the zone lot. So that you're developing something, not wasting your time, that, that works and fits with Ryan Beck.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, that brings us, that concludes the, uh, the application portion of this evening. And we'll move on to the public hearings. Uh, the first upcoming hearing, uh, this evening was scheduled for Wildflower School, then seven eighty-five and seven ninety-one is the night. Uh, we're, uh, we received correspondence today from the applicant that they don't have new information or they don't have complete information in response from DOT and would like to, uh, they're not here tonight. We, however, you know, scheduled this as a public hearing and we have received, um, some correspondence and some information over the last month, um, pertaining to this in particular. Um, certainly we received a letter from the neighbor again, and we also received additional, uh, a response from Bryant Knapp, who's the fire chief, who did visit the site and asked for changes to the site plan based on his observations and reviews. So before I open it to, um, public hearing, comments, journeys, or anything you'd like to say?
I just wanted to note, um, we did receive emails that they have submitted, their engineer has submitted, um, plans to DOT. Uh, they had submitted this set of plans, uh, which originally had, I believe it was a twelve-foot lane kind of coming around here. Uh, the fire chief said that that wasn't going to work, and as you know, I noted in my memo that I didn't think that's what the plan would even work for the box truck that they used as the example. Um, this fire truck seat, I guess, definitely would not fit through there, so he requested fifteen feet, which is now shown in a new set of plans. I think what they've done is they've cut this back a bit, so it's further enough from the middle, so this, I think, came up here a little further. So I believe they've cut it back based on my measurements, but there's some funny numbers going on based on the spilling, so I'll confirm that. Um, but if he's got fifteen feet coming through here now, um, that would provide for what the fire chief has asked for. But I don't believe these new plans with the fifteen feet have gone to DOT, so I was going to recommend that we, I wrote back to town and the applicant's engineer and just suggested we had to, that he submit these on DOT. Something that did fit to DOT was like a week and a half ago, these just came in about two or three days ago. So just make sure that these went to DOT as well, so we'll all have the same information here. If you're okay with that, I'll just recommend.
I think they have to.
Yeah, it doesn't change much.
I think it certainly makes a change at, right on the line.
Well, they originally had fifteen feet, I think they widened this anyway already, uh, in the last set of plans, but it does kind of change the circulation and the type of vehicle that's anticipated to go into the site. And again, just want to make sure.
Does it change the number of apartment spaces?
Then I'm not entirely clear on the density of this, it looks to be the same as what was on the previous one. You remember like the different color vehicles they have, temporary parking, plenty of parking. Had that in this one as well. So if you flip back and forth, I believe it's essentially the same. Again, by cutting back that center island, I think they provided the needed space, that's it. I want to make sure that everyone will get the same plans.
Is everybody okay?
I think it's really starting to get...
Yeah. All right, Jim, so you'll take care of that?
I'll, I'll, I'll be known, uh, DOT market.
Anything from other planning board members? Is there anyone here from the public wishing to comment on this application? Given the review time that we've been encountering with DOT, I'm going to suggest that we schedule this for two months out. Um, we've seen this is the standard of your time. They've had to ask us to continue in the sense of lack of response. So we've got a number of things coming up and unless you all feel it's important to go out one month, I'd suggest we go out two weeks.
The comments are strong. Did we get an email later, earlier today? That makes some very, there's only a few comments from DOT.
Um, yes, there was an email that came out with some, some technical issues, I didn't actually dive into that.
Yeah. I just know that they're trying to get this pushed along and open, I'd say, before the coming school year. Um, and I, I agree that we have, um, but I also know that they're deep in the process, so they just start talking to the other. Um, I would, I would be for keeping it on schedule.
All right, that's...
Um, but if we go out to, let's say we get something, you know, beforehand, we can't change that.
No, I get it, but you know, with new, now with this change of the width, um, I, I agree, we can go either way.
Yeah, I think what Sean says is fair.
All right, then let's err on the side of being fair. So, um, then if there's no other public comment or nothing else here, I would have to make a motion to continue the public hearing until April twenty-one. So hope, motion second, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Action, motion carries. The next public hearing to proceed is that of Darren Prince on Effer Hook Road, Effer Hook Road, uh, site plan review for the construction of the single family dwelling. Cover terrace or underground pool fence. Um, as you recall, they have asked for this to be adjourned until April. Um, but, uh, we have already noticed for public hearing. So I will ask at this time, um, public if there's anyone here to comment on this application. And then we're going to, um, turn to Kim to give us, um, some, um, what the next step should be. So, um, let me open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here to comment on the application of Swiss and Prince. Sure, Kim?
... well, six thousand Effer Hook Road. Um, I, I'm just, have, do we know why they want the driveway where they want it? Is it simply for the beauty of...
It's never been...
Zero, because as neighbors, I don't, I don't know anybody on Effer Hook Road that thinks a driveway cut where they're asking for it makes any sense. So, um, but it would be useful to know why it's so important to them to access the property that way and not through the established route.
That information has never been offered either through the applicants themselves or through their representative. I got, I can answer that. I think the question has been raised before, but there is no answer.
I know, they have mentioned their, some of the concerns they have mentioned in the past for not wanting it off Barrett Tyler is mostly, it seems, it seems to be mostly due to maintenance concerns. Um, there's like a maintenance agreement with three landowners and there's concerns how it would be maintained. Um, we've provided, Breton Lions have provided legal counsel to the planning board. Um, I think in, uh, August or September and, and again in, um, November, um, you know, kind of going through the maintenance agreement and then going through the map notes that do state that the driveway should be off of Barrett Tyler.
I asked, I've sat through those presentations and discussions and, and I, I, um, that sounds like an odd concern. And as does the, that is, so that's, the only thing left I'd like to know is, is why it's so important to them.
I have one question.
Uh, let me just deal with the public first. Is there anyone else from the public that should comment on that? All right, um, so Kim, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, uh, well, before I, did Tom have a question?
Well, I'm confused. How can we do a site plan review until we know the access?
Well, I apologize, I shouldn't have just continued. Um, so anyway, that is...
I wasn't here last meeting.
No, and nothing, nothing happened at the last meeting that really progressed it. So that is really the main, the main open question that has just been a continuing back and forth between the planning board and the applicant is the location of the driveway. The planning board has stated their reasons, um, for suggesting Barrett Tyler Road. That's based on the map notes, based on some concerns with Effer Hook Road, based on the rock outpropping and the curve cut and, or the blind curve that is going around it. Um, and the applicant has stated their desires to have it off of Effer Hook Road. Um, I think the next step should be, what I would recommend is that the planning board, uh, you know, we can help draft it with, with Melody and Jim, but it really should just be, let's just get that answered. Let's get that answer to know, are they going to be continuing to propose Effer Hook Road? Are they considering Barrett Tyler Road? I think if we get that clear answer, and then the planning board is going to be able to move forward with the Effer Hook Road or the Barrett Tyler. Because there's been a lot of discussions and back and forth and pros and cons stated by both applicant and planning board, but there's never been a definitive answer. Um, you know, the, the planning board has expressed concerns, but, and the applicant has acknowledged some concerns.
Like a straw poll.
It did, yeah. And, and so after the planning board had done the straw poll, the applicant has provided what they, uh, are suggesting are material changes that have happened. One being the bernal pools and the DEC changes to the jurisdiction. There's been concerns again about the maintenance agreement. Um, but it is the planning board's discretion and decision ultimately, you know, if there's been a material change. But I think it's just been a lot of back and forth, and I think the best way to really address that is to just ask the applicant, are you proposing it off Barrett Tyler Road? If not, then we're going to continue moving with one set of plans. We're just, give us the answer and then at the next meeting, we'll just be able to defend it all.
I have a question. I, I don't really feel we have a complete application on them. Should we just at this point start this all over, put on a new application?
I wouldn't suggest we, because I, I think the concern, well, I mean, what would your, to have it off of Barrett Tyler Road with that? I wouldn't suggest we, because I, I think the concern, well, I mean, what would your, to have it off of Barrett Tyler Road, would that be the new application?
Well, I mean, we don't have.
I know we don't have that.
So I just don't know why we're even in a public hearing. I mean, I know they requested that, but we still haven't had a full application, even received proper public comment.
Well, we have an application that just has the driveway going to Acker Hook. We've been going back and forth on that. I think what Kim is saying is we need to.
I was wanting to get that question definitively. And then if, if they continue with Acker Hook Road, you can ask, you know, I think Jim has some outstanding questions that we can see if they need it. Or, or maybe the planning board has, you know, will have deliberations on just the Acker Hook Road. But I think the first step is to establish where is that driveway being proposed 100%.
I'm a little unclear. If the planning board decides, as it seems to have decided, that there are many good reasons for it to be off Tyler, Barrett Tyler. Then are you suggesting that they should say, we want the application to go ahead with, with our driveway off Acker Hook Road? And then the planning board can either approve or disapprove the site plan?
I would like the applicant to specifically state that they are either going forward with the Acker Hook Road or that they've taken the planning board's comments and will be proposing a Barrett Tyler. I just want to know exactly where they're moving. I just don't want the applicant to perhaps come back and say, well, we'll, we'll move it off of Barrett Tyler. I just want to just know from the applicant's standpoint, where is the driveway that they're going?
And, and then if their answer is, we want it to go off Acker Hook Road, what would you see the next steps to be?
I think the planning board can discuss it, knowing for sure that they're not going to suggest Barrett Tyler Road. The planning board can continue with their review. If you need more information on the engineering, you, you can ask for that. If you think you have enough information, perhaps consider starting deliberations. But then we'll know for 100% sure where the driveway is and then you can continue with your site plan.
And then, then ultimately either approve or disapprove the site plan?
For the site plan, yeah, you can approve it, you can disapprove it, deny it, or you can make conditions. But I think to, to make a condition that the driveway has to be off Barrett Tyler Road, I think that's where we're at right now. And I don't think the planning board can really dictate that it could be complete, you know, it's so different from what they're proposing. It's like the planning board always says, you know, we can't, the planning board can't fix the problem or fix the, you know, make their plan for them. The plan, the applicant has to be the one to propose that. If they're not going to propose it, that's something the planning board needs to know. And then they'll continue with the site plan.
Well, and the lifting of the stop work order and the notice of violation is still in limbo.
Yes, we'll have to, we'll have to figure out that process.
But, but that is another, another piece of it.
Yes.
Because any approval, it would seem to me, would require some remediation.
Yes.
Which, and so the final site plan, whatever it is, will not be approvable until.
You figure out what.
Until we figure out what the mitigation is on the original stop work order and notice of violation. So that's somehow in this mix as well.
There's also. The mitigation could differ depending upon where the driveway is.
That's correct.
But there's also a significant, I think, moderate to significant amount of engineering analysis that needs to be done for both our applications, to be honest. But certainly for the one on Acker Hook Road because of the discussions we've had about the cuts through the, the end of the hillside as it is and cutting back the hillside. So I think there's a significant amount of engineering review that will have to be done for either of those, you know, if we want to get to that point. Because we just can't make a decision without ensuring that our engineer thinks that the driveway is going to be solid and, you know, that everything's being done. It's up to.
Because I, I certainly have the impression that this planning board is not willing to have the roadside cut back, the rocky area cut back.
I, I think that that is a fair conclusion.
So why would they go do an engineering study of it?
That's why I mentioned it. I, I don't.
This isn't making.
I don't know how to say it, except that it's, it's a, it's a significant expense of all the engineering work. So I think that's a consideration the board should make. How is it, how and when exactly you make that, I'm not sure. But I think that is, that is a consideration you should take into account. There's a, there's a moderate amount of work there that has to be done, both on the applicant's side, I believe, and on our side. Because I don't believe we have engineered plans for the driveway. And the not slower cut that's proposed, I think requires that, but that I have to defer to Christian.
I thought Kim did a very good job of providing us with the background of the evolution of this large lot that got subdivided. And it's pretty clear from that, that the only way that this lot in question could work as a building lot is if it got access off this constructed Barrett Tyler Road because of the constraints along Acker Hook, which were known at the time. And so we're taking something that isn't otherwise developable and trying to make it, or the applicant is trying to make it developable by making a whole bunch of changes that are unacceptable, that, that were anticipated 25 years ago, 20 years ago, whenever this was laid out. So you're right, we can't force them to go and exercise that easement on somebody else's property, which they have the permission to do. They have to take that step themselves, so I hope they see the light.
Just like, I mean, we're all kind of saying the same thing. But if we don't have a decision on the driveway and then we have a public hearing that is on a file that we don't know this big question of, how long does that process continue where the public hearing is just going until we have that answer? Like, how do these, you know, like, timing wise?
I think what Kim is suggesting, and she's given me a copy of her notes, stop me if I misinterpret them, that we continue the public hearing until April, as the applicant has requested. That we, following that, draft up a letter.
Yeah, to specify.
Option A or option B. We need to know.
And then.
We need to know by, by, by September 21st.
By April 7th, I believe, with a submission date. And that way is not coming in, we're right at the meeting and we know. And then I think from there, we'll be able to formulate our next steps. But I think the first step is to just make sure we understand what the applicant is proposing. I just wouldn't want the planning board to be, you know, saying it should be off Barrett Tyler Road, for example, and then start making that decision. And then the applicant says, okay, well, we'll, we'll put it off Barrett Tyler Road. I think we need to just make sure we understand exactly what the applicant not only wants, but is proposing and that we're just moving forward now with one option.
And then what you're suggesting is that at the April 21st meeting, we would again open the public hearing. We would close the public hearing if no new information comes in and we would have the option to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, right, I mean, that's just, you know, so we have had the public hearing open on the Acker Hook Road proposal. I think that a lot of information has come in from the applicant. I have provided, as Craig mentioned, you know, I provided a memo to you last year. So I think that we have a lot of information that has come forward. If there's no new information that comes forward at the April meeting and they would like to continue with the Acker Hook Road, no changes have been made, you can consider closing the public hearing at that point, you know, if you think more information is needed, you can ask for it. I mean, that was just my initial suggestion, just because we have had the public hearing open for several sessions and doesn't seem like we're getting much new information from the applicant. But, you know, that was just a suggestion, if, you know, if you think you have the reinformation to make that informed decision, you can consider closing the public hearing, again, assuming that's going off Acker Hook Road. If they're coming in with Barrett Tyler Road, you might have more questions than that.
Would it require a engineered stamped plan for the driveway for it to be complete application by April 7th?
I don't think it's needed by April 7th, but it is needed.
For which?
Yeah, right.
Either one.
I'm suggesting we push that to that with a.
And ask for.
Well, and give them time to hopefully, and when they show up to that, they hopefully have the driveway picked with engineered plans and can answer all the questions that we're going to have.
Don't you never drink twice?
They, well, they were supposed to be.
They were during last March.
It's been open since December.
They during, I believe, three.
So, so we agree with, we think that they're, they're putting together their final pitch with Acker Hook. What's going on, you know, for the last couple of months?
I haven't heard any updates.
But I haven't heard any updates, so I don't know for sure.
It's been quite organized, so we do.
I agree with Sean.
I want to see, I want to see.
Well, it's like this, we're playing this like cat and mouse game for the last year.
Like, if you're going to, if you're going to say this is where I want my driveway, I need to see plans that back up. And I'm not either, either way. And it's like, like, I think that we write them a letter and have them pick that location so we're really clear. And then we request a full application, so we have something to review, one way or the other.
When they cancel, Jim, do they say we will have everything?
No, no. Do they just simply ask to have adjourned, they're not even asking to continue the public hearing, they're just asking to adjourn. But to go back to something Ed has said, it has been the general impression that this board was not supportive of the driveway going directly to Acker Hook Road. So would a complete set of engineering documents change your mind on that?
I think if, if they're proposing, yeah, I think it's, I, I don't know, but that's something that I think that if they were to propose that driveway, they're going to have to propose that with it. And if we continue to say that, no, 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 we can, I think we, as we look at, again, it depends on looking at the cutout, right? Because they said a bush last year, they have to remove a bush to have the clearance for that driveway, which is not the case, which an engineer drawing would show. I think it would, it would further educate everyone who's going back. You know, it gives even more reasons to, to communicate on why that is not a good spot. If that's the spot they're going, I don't think they're going back down.
I just don't, wouldn't want to convey the impression that this group has changed its mind. About where the driveway.
Where we maintain. I think having some honest comments for them, and I mean, that'll be their final decision. I'm pretty clear that the removal of that bank does not feel great to me and I'm happy to put that on record.
And that would be part of the discussion, right? Do you need the engineering plans to make the decision of what has been proposed in terms of the, the changes that are needed to get to Acker Hook Road?
Which, you know, they're not, they're not showing on this plan. I mean, they showed the driveway, they didn't provide this kind of cutout. They haven't provided us anything in the past that shows how far back that, that, you know, this would have to be cut back. So it, it's a balancing act. You don't want to make them spend money on unnecessary engineering if, if.
So we want to open to what their discussions are too. I don't want it to be the, the, I mean, I think that a lot of the planning board discussions have been open and transparent. And I think that you do have a lot of information that you are considering. I just don't want them to see that we've made our decision until the applicant has been afforded that opportunity to fully submit their, their review.
I guess my concern is we don't have, we don't know what they're going to be able to do to make that driveway possible. If it didn't we.
Well, what's compelling for me is the report that Kim gave us on the original submission.
Yes.
That's what's compelling for me. And that's what is driving my feeling that, that was put in place all those years ago for the very reasons that we're talking about now. And I think that will always be the tipping point for me, barring any new extraordinary information. And that's sort of why I'm thinking, if I believe that, then the engineering isn't likely to change. I believe that that was what was important then and important now.
They do keep trying to reference that a neighbor was afforded a different scenario.
Kim answered that.
So I, they have stated that. I don't agree with their analysis. Jim, can you, on that proposal, I don't, maybe even I'll, I don't know what's a better way of putting it. So their argument is that the neighbor that Barrett Tyler Road is located on, it's currently owned, I believe, by Blue Brindle LLC. And they have argued, the applicant has argued that Blue Brindle has gained access off of, of different plans than what was approved. But the Barrett Tyler Road and that easement, access easement is actually on Blue Brindle's property. It even says that right in the maintenance agreement. So it might not go all the way to the cul-de-sac, but it still is gaining access from Acker Hook Road off of Barrett Tyler Road. So I believe from my review of the maintenance agreement and the filed map, that that condition is still being met. Maybe not again exactly off the cul-de-sac, but off of Barrett Tyler Road and another section. So I think that concept is still being approved and upheld by Blue Brindle's.
So I can kind of ball that in here. I mean, you can see, this, this is kind of the edge of where that driveway is, right? This comes up to where the cul-de-sac would have been, cul-de-sac, so somewhere up in here, it kind of comes up and around and then comes back down to Acker Hook. And what the applicant did on this parcel was they came in here and then ran the driveway up to their property versus saying, maybe further up here and going to their property. They still came in off the Barrett Tyler Road. They just didn't bring their section of the road.
They just kind of veered off their road a bit sooner than the cul-de-sac. But, you know, even on that filed map that created those three lots, of that, filed map 7418B, it says like 1, 2, and then that one is 3. You know, it kind of provides like a little access point, doesn't really, actually even says that Tierbridge Road is no longer a road because it wasn't adopted by the town. But, excuse me, but anyway, you can, it, it still is going off of that initial, not off of Acker Hook Road per se. And like I said, even Barrett Tyler Road itself is located on that lot 3 anyway, so still on that same curve cut.
If I remember correctly, Kim, their requirement was that these lots come off of Barrett Tyler Road. There was no specific saying that one lot had to come off at 300 feet and the other.
Right, that's what I mean. It's just, it's just, I think the map list says common access of the lots 1, 2, and 3 shall be off of this easement area, in recent easement area. And Blue Brindle still does that.
With the intent that everybody come out to Acker Hook Road at the same point here. And there's nothing saying that this is the parcel that they would be developing. They have to come all the way up to the cul-de-sac either.
As a matter of fact, it became all the way to the cul-de-sac, the wetland area that's there. Coming further down here actually gets you away from the wetland, puts you more on the head buffer. There's obviously something you would want to see, versus going across the wetlands. So LAA was talking about, you know, coming all the way up to the end or certainly that makes the town standard. We talked about that in the, in the memos we wrote about the driveway in the past. The town's not going to accept the road, so it can be a driveway standard.
Isn't there D language that says that the access shall be off of Barrett Tyler Road?
Yeah, that's the shop.
So they're not providing any reason why that can't be the case. Why, you know, why they can't do it the way that it's indicated on the plans. And I, I don't know, it, it, as Sean was saying, if they give us a completed application, we would still have the discretion to reject it. It ends up being a big waste of everybody's time to do it that way, but maybe that's the only way to get through this. Because I, I think we're obligated to identify what the issues are, fully analyze them, and then deliberate. And if the outcome of that deliberation is that everybody on this board says, no, we're not going to accept the driveway as planned, then they have to give us something else.
It would just be denied at that point.
It would be denied, we've got plans.
They would have to start a new.
They have to start over again, yeah, okay.
So these are what we've been given. I don't think we've given any emphasis in FYI, you know, this is what they gave us for the driveway section, cross-section. This is what they gave us for the slow considerations. I don't believe that these are what we need. The cuts that get into it, I believe, we need some retaining wall, or there's going to be feathered out. And the more that you feather it out, the further you're talking about more tree removal. So all of this has to be done by an engineer and then obviously tied back into, oops, tied back into, you know, the site plan overall. So we have elements of what we're talking about, but we don't have an engineer plan to say, this is what you have to do and this is what ensures that. I mean, you can engineer your way through, just about anything, right? Depending on how far you want to go and whatever. But that's not really the discussion I think here, it's, you know. What did the, what did the deed say? What did the, she say? And what did the planning board think, think to do based on?
Well, and they've heard from us very clearly what, so I don't know. But we just still don't have a complete application.
Well, Kim has outlined one way to go forward. And unless someone has strong objections to that.
I mean, my goal is to also, you know, we're both the board and the applicant. I don't want to be straining this along either. But I just want to just make sure that, you know, again, both sides have been presented, but no side in my, it just, I just wanted to just make sure that. but no side in my, it just, I just wanted to just make sure that this is what they want to do despite what the board has opined and that they understand the concerns. I can include that in the letter, just kind of summarizing from the last meeting that, you know, these were the concerns raised. And we'll just, just verify that they are proposing it off of Akron Book and not off Barrett Tyler, just to make sure that we understand moving forward. This is the option they've chosen and this is what the planning board will be reviewing.
And that's what we have to do. We can certainly talk about alternatives and other suggestions and plans certainly change throughout the process, but we happen to have that final decision.
It's such a drastic change. It's not like it's a matter of just switching the foundation or switching the angle. I mean, it changes the plan completely depending on what it's, and we just, we just need to know 100%.
And my question is what plan? We don't have one.
And that's what we're trying to.
So, great, let's go forward. I, I, I'm in agreement, so it's April 21st suggestion. Throughout the evening, I'm not, I'm sorry.
So do you want to, yeah, do you want to have it so that they have to give us an answer? Maybe not the plans, but the answer by the April meeting?
No, I, I think you should need to set a date.
Oh, yes, I mean, April 7th, which is, as opposed to the May meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
7th or 21st?
Well, the 21st meeting, but Kim is suggesting that they respond to the letter that will.
I believe the submission date is April, it's April 7th.
It's April 7th.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll sit to whatever, what the submission deadline is for every applicant, I thought.
Correct. Man, your motion.
Motion.
Second. All votes in favor, opposed. And so we are beginning this separate motion to continue the public hearing until April 21st.
So.
Second.
Second.
All votes in favor, aye, opposed, extension, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. The driven last public hearing this evening, the Senate Law Pledge, 492 Akron Road Site Plan Special Use Permit that lands from condo units. Edna has the key.
Well, just with the other quick outline, if you want me to run through that, but otherwise I don't have a lot of comments. So Melody had asked me just to kind of provide everyone with a quick kind of update reminder of where we are. So just to give you a really simple, quick slideshow, this is kind of where we stand. So recent work completed. We reviewed the project details through last year in several public hearings. The secret part two was drafted through meetings where this board had discussions on October 21st, November 4th, November 21st, and December 2nd. And then the secret part three and the determination of significance approved by this board on February 18th. The current status, and obviously you guys can help you know more because you've been there. The, the application for the transfer of the two units between the two existing store structures before the ZBA. My understanding is that they had reviewed and discussed the application and that we should be expecting the head of determination from them soon. This public hearing of the planning board is still open and pending until the ZBA makes their decision. And then once the ZBA has ruled on the variance application, this board will then be in the position to be able to discuss the permits that are required, which includes site plan, special use permit, wetlands permit, and subdivision utilizing these code areas noted below. And then I just noted that for the wetlands, we do still, you know, we have the speedies permit, which is likely to be a condition of approval as it typically is with developments like this. That's outside agency permit that's beyond our control. It's absolutely required for this application to go forward, but it is one that is within the agency's control. And that's about it. So a quick kind of overview of what we're going to do next is what's occurred in the ZBA.
Kim, what's the timeline on the ZBA?
At the March meeting, no, it was March. At the February meeting, there was a public hearing opened. There were two comments received. One was from, I think, Akron Terrac. And then another neighbor, I don't recall it, I think she's here too. They stated that they were generally in favor for that aspect of the property. They had asked for a condition that the stone barn had at most two units. Because this is more, the application for an area variance is really for a transfer of density as opposed to an increase in density. The ZBA was amenable to that. And the applicant Charlie was there and he explained that was really the best way of using the stone barn as well. So a resolution has been drafted, been circulated to the ZBA, granting the area variance and including those conditions that Stone Barn has at most two units and the Mansion House has at most six units. I believe it's been posted on the website, the draft resolution. So it will be considered at the March meeting Wednesday, Friday.
The only other update we have for that is that we did meet, they do their site visit after they close the public hearings. We didn't meet them on Saturday at the site as well. So they are prepared to make their determination Wednesday, this week.
Planning board members, any questions about that stuff? Do you have anything else?
So this time?
Public hearing is still open. So if there are members of the public here wishing to make comment, the microphone is available to you. Can you say whether it will be continued? The public hearing. Oh, I, I don't see any reason to close the public hearing.
Yeah.
No, no.
Is it generally closed just after the ZBA?
We'll take that up with the, you know, once we've got the ZBA.
I mean, I think, you know, the planning board is still reviewing the site plan and the subdivision application. What had been done previously was maybe the secret review. So I think there, I, I don't see an issue with closing the public hearing at this time.
You don't see a need to.
A need to, right, yes.
Okay, no, yes. Can't resist, can you? Just can't resist.
So, yeah, so Jim, it would be amazing to have that slide that just, the ones with the sections of the code that you were referencing for the next steps. We could have. I should think that. Oh, I'll take it as soon as I shut up. So, what was I gonna ask? Oh, so with the, so for the special use permits and things like that, are there the, the, I guess I'm confused about why, is it the public hearing just staying open pending the ZBA decision? Or is there going to be further discussion about the actual site plan and the proposals and the permits that they, that they still need? And that's, we'd be commenting on those basis.
So we're keeping, you know, we are continuing the review. The ZBA determination is another milestone in terms of allowing us to go forward with the other steps of the review. And that I would assume the public hearing will be open throughout that and be a discussion.
Okay, super. I, I'm just, this is just to kind of get it straight in my head. And do you know whether they have to do a, I'm sure JD for the DEC, they, they're gonna, the property is gonna get reviewed.
My understanding is that they're aware of that and they, I don't know if you filed or.
Oh, sorry.
So I can certainly provide an update on that. So we are in contact with the DEC. We have been. So Matt Rudekopf's office, as well as his personnel, are taking care of all of our coordination with the state DEC. We have been in contact with them since the project was through the secret process up to January 1. It will require the jurisdictional determination. We are currently meeting with them personally onsite for, they're calling consultant review at the, to verify all of the wetlands onsite. We still have a validated wetland map that's good through 2027. However, they still want to go through that process. So we are in, in the works with all of that. That does also include, you know, the, since DC is involved in the speedies permit, obviously that includes the speedies permit as well.
So on, on that note, thank you very much for that. The landowners through whose property the Fallsford Creek tributary runs would be happy to make their property available if anybody wanted to look at the wetlands that they discharge will impact. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, if there's nothing else, then we'll continue the public hearing. The motion to continue the public hearing until April 21st. So, a vote, a vote in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. That concludes the public hearings for the seeking. Edna is returning to the board. And we have just two signers for us to look at. And I believe under old business, Bachman Shipwreck, I'm not received, they're a D O H approval. So that's the news on the old business. But let's do the sign for us now.
Great. Okay, so in the email that I sent everyone, if you remember, that wasn't that long ago. We reviewed Mike's tree service for the signs. And it was for, well, we reviewed his tree service a while ago. And then signs came in, we get the signs, Rhinebeck sport, spine came in, we reviewed that one. And it turns out that the signs that were installed in front of Mike's, which are these here, were not the signs that were approved by the planning board, which is shown over here. See, it's, it's a big M with Mike's tree. I believe that this is Mike's tree with a small m. Rhinebeck sport and spine, it's essentially the same, except that they have a spine right through the middle of it here. So it ended up being a different sign than what was approved by the board. The zoning administrator felt that they needed to come back to make sure that you were okay with this and that they didn't need any other approvals. I took a look at this, it was a little hard to estimate, but the first look to Mike's sign, the analysis was that the sign came in at 60%, so we refined. This is kind of the example showing what that area is compared to the overall sign area. Then this convoluted thing is in the picture that they sent us, it's essentially showing you where I think the percentages lie in terms of the amount of area that's used for typeface. And this is how we determine it, the code, this area that's showing green. So by, for all purposes, the way I see it, this whole area here and here is, is filled with typeface, that's 50%. And then down here, you just have smaller percentages that are used within kind of the grid down here. And Rhinebeck sport is fine, we benefited without understanding it over. These are very rough estimates of mine, don't take them as, as engineered analysis. But based on my, my, you know, kind of rough math that I kind of put up here, I believe that the Rhinebeck sport is fine, sign is probably fine estimated as long as you're okay with the design. But I do unfortunately think that Mike's sign is not. I think he is well over the 60% typeface that is permitted. Because the area for Mike's, which is showing blue here, this is a lot smaller than what was originally proposed going down both sides of the sign before. So even if I decrease my estimate of what Mike's sign is by 20%, we're still over the 60% area permitted. So I think even if I give myself a lot of picketing for error, we're still over. So it would appear that Mike's sign even needs a variance to go forward as is, or you have to replace it and put it back to the way it was originally approved. And discord is to make sure you're okay with the Rhinebeck sport and spine sign as is, but I don't think it goes over on the coverage.
The, the, the original one, I think, is simply clearer, it's a better sign.
It's much easier, I find it to be much more attractive.
I don't know where to look on the other one, there's so much going on.
I, I, I'm not in favor of accepting the design. I, I think it's not what we approved. I think the design is, are less attractive and aesthetic increases. It's gonna, even if we work to love it, it's still over in terms of Jim's calculations, which in my mind would be quite a making anyone, anyway.
They have a variance, they have to do another.
I don't, but I don't, I wouldn't, I don't, I just, it's one's completely safe. Sorry. Seth, is there an explanation? Do you know what happened between the design?
Seth won't be here because this is the first I've heard of this.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you're staying.
So, you know, the sign needed to be reviewed by the board. It's a referral from the zoning administrator, so we need to provide your, your comments back on that referral.
So you find the signs are over the percentage?
Mike, I believe Mike's, I don't think Rhinebeck sport and spine is, but there's also the design.
And then we recommend that they install the sign that was previously.
Yes.
Both are just.
Are you okay with the little spinal column?
I think that's fine.
Yeah, I think the.
I do not want to see it.
Looks like a snake to me and I don't like snakes. Whatever.
But I, I think that falls within the permissible range, as Jim pointed out. But, you know, the other one, it's, it's a change from what they submitted and why it is that they couldn't just make the sign that they had the design for.
I really like one of his names, Eric. Well, I can't. I, I walked that road and I, I noticed the sign and I actually liked the new sign. Well, you're, I think I've numbered.
I think so. I don't like the original one that was approved with that quickly M. It doesn't mean anything. But you look at that as like.
It's supposed to be slow.
Yes, but look at the other one.
The other one to me is just.
Does it kind of look like a couple of pine trees that are falling over?
Ah.
Oh, like dandelion sort of.
I happen to like the letter M.
I, I think the negative, I think the negative space on the original one at least balances the sign. And on top of that, regardless of our aesthetic choices, it's over, it's over, the bottom line is it's bigger than it's allowed. So that's the answer, regardless of our opinion.
I agree, that's, that's it.
That's it, we can't prove it.
So we can't prove it, but we could allow them to, anyway, we had a draft. Something sounding like a referral resolution, which was that we are fine and believe that the Rhinebeck spinals, by name, what?
Rhinebeck sport is fine.
Sport is fine, meets the code and meets the coverage, but that the Mike's tree sign, tree service does not. And we prefer to see it return. We don't, we don't encourage a variance to be given. We like the original approved sign to be installed. Shall we take a vote on that? Sharon, are we, are you objecting or?
I think I'll object.
Okay.
I do like the, the label one better.
All right, others?
I'll object, I go reply to that sign multiple times every day and it's fine.
I, I'm objecting because when we go through the process of approving the sign, I find it inappropriate for someone to go ahead and without coming back to the planning board or the zoning administrator and say, I've thought about this, I'd like to suggest a different sign. I, because we see it all the time, object to people getting a permit for something and then doing what they want.
Put it that way, I agree with you. You're putting it as, okay, this was approved versus unapproved, not aesthetics of the sign.
I'm just saying, if we go through the process and we spend a lot of time and Brian spends his time and we give them approval and then they willingly ignore the approval and do what they want, I just think there has to be a time when we say we can't keep doing that.
Now, is this a violation?
Yes.
Yes.
So we could just say that we have no objection to the zoning officer's assessment? That it is a violation?
It's a referral to us and we can cite that this is a violation and that we like to see the sign that was approved.
Either the sign that was approved or they can.
Mike, Mike did submit a new, new application, revised application, whatever you want to say, to Brian. So to get to this point of a referral to the planning board. So he has applied saying, I want you to approve what I installed.
It's two, he's already, he's already put the sign up.
Yeah, I, his application is not gonna be, you showed that it's not a requirement.
And that's the point I made. We're seeing so many of these, we see them in every meeting. Oh, I didn't know I needed a permit. Oh, I didn't know it should change. And I think we just have to start recognizing that. So I, I think we'll pull the board because there's been some changes. So Craig?
I, I support the zoning officer's assessment violation.
And then we would, we want to see the, my recommendation is.
We want to see the sign change. You know, we roughly what I'm gonna write up.
We were skipping around.
I didn't write anything for this one because I didn't know where we'd land. So essentially recommend that Mike retain the installed sign. Or, I'm sorry, Mike installed the sign that was originally approved because the current sign does not meet the code. The planning board is not in favor of the current design and don't believe a variance should be approved. The sport and spine sign does meet the code and the design is considered to be okay, something to that.
I wouldn't say we accept that.
Yes.
Okay, and then on the board, we have the motion, Craig?
Aye.
And then aye. John?
Aye.
Sharon? Sharon? Delise?
Aye.
Sharon?
Why couldn't he come back before us to correct it? Rather than just leaving it as it is, rather than just going back to the other one?
Well, because most of us like the other one better.
It's over in size.
It's over in size.
But then what I'm saying is he could come, take the, the current one.
I think the property that they haven't, they haven't done an application.
Sharon, you can vote yes or no, but you voted yes.
All right, I'll vote no, just to keep it going.
Thank you. We have one no vote, and the rest are ayes votes. And I think then, if there's nothing else, as I mentioned, Bach and Shipler, the only owner of old business, is still waiting for the...
Melody, did you do a motion for the Sport and Spine?
It was in...
It was in included.
It's included.
But that's okay, because within the...
Is Sharon a yes or no? A yes?
Sharon was a no.
On the Sport and Spine one?
It's on one motion.
It's on one.
Is there anything I just, or can I ask for your turn?
Bach and Shipler, who we have on April 21st, right, Seth?
Okay, so...
Because we told them to move on to the next, but not public hearing.
All right, I think so, man, a motion, Sharon.
So, awesome.
All right. I can at least wish a happy St. Patrick's Day to Sharon, who's proclaiming her ayes.
I'm agreeing.
And Sharon, who's announced and wanted to get out of work.